And I call back to order this Boulder Valley School Board special meeting. And we are entering into the budget conversation portion of our special meeting. And so this port is to give us budget input from the public. And to have been able to do this, you had to sign up like you have to sign up for all of our public participation. And I think we have one live and two virtual. Is that right, Laura?
Two in person and two virtual.
I think one dropped out.
Oh.
I think Peggy.
In your email.
It's in the email. Peggy's not going to testify on the budget.
Okay.
So one in person, two virtual. Okay. All right. Then we'll start the meeting with Mandy Nuku.
Hi, I am the parent of three current BVSD students, one at Angivine Middle School. I'm here today to ask for more support in the budget for Angivine and the larger equity work of the district. Our son as a young black student at Angivine does not feel this is a safe place to learn, and I am frustrated and angry with the negligence of administration. Students, particularly students of color like our son, have experienced significant harm and missed days of instruction. With an all new school administration next year, Angivine needs more support, not less. Additional staff to support the dual language offering being added next year. We need extra funding to ensure its success and to eliminate the racist climate and culture. We need hall monitors or trained support staff for the ongoing behavioral issues. Because the issues we are facing at Angivine are not new to BVSD or isolated to our school alone, I'm asking that BVSD invest in equity. While there are spaces for diverse parent and student voices to be heard, there's little to no accountability or action from district leadership in response to what's shared in these spaces. While we are incredibly fortunate to have deeply committed leaders in the equity engagement team, it's not enough. Their work in the affirming spaces created are invaluable. However, two people are not enough for 56 schools given the pervasive racism happening. I'd like to see an expansion of the equity engagement team, particularly at the cabinet level, so there can be timely and systemic action. We need to shift the culture and behavior in the district away from pervasive racism and toward an equitable learning environment for black and brown students and families. Equity work cannot be symbolic, structural, financial, and personnel supports are critical. Until the equity work is a true pressure on the BVSD budget, there will be no imperative to solve the pervasive racism happening. If this is currently in a cabinet leader's scope of work, then let me tell you, the current structure in place isn't working. Emails, complaints, concerns, including our own, do not get addressed at all, or if they do, it takes months. All will harm, harassment, and racial discrimination continue to happen in violation of Title Six. Again, our experience is not unique, and I am here in solidarity with the many Latino families at Angivine who have been begging for change, as well as the other parents of black students who face the same harm or have left the school or district altogether because their kids are unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you. If you got cut off too soon, feel free to email the board too. Okay, thanks. The next person is virtual, and it's Erica Solove.
Yes. Hello. Thank you to the board for the opportunity to speak today. Erica Solove, I have a soon to be second grader at Superior Elementary, as well as a future kindergartner. And my son thrives in school and adores it. And I wish that was the end of my comment today. However, we all read the same frequent school shooting headlines, and we know that the incidents of school shootings today in this country are unprecedented and skyrocketing like never before in the 24 years since the Columbine tragedy. I can no longer sit back in fear without taking action or wait on legislators to make a change. Thus, I've partnered with two amazing fellow SES parents to dig deeply into this topic. And we've had the opportunity to speak with Superintendent Anderson, Rob Price, entire security team, principals, PTA leaders, superior law enforcement, and even a member of this board about this topic, to share research, case studies, best practices, all culminating in recommendations about how to secure our schools without negative repercussions on students or staff. These recommendations include both noninvasive hardening measures for our facilities, as well as soft people-based education and interventions. All of these proven security measures require obviously resources, and I can't imagine a more worthy allocation of resources than keeping our kids alive at school. I want to highlight one priority item ballistic film window treatment on all exterior windows that makes glass more difficult to penetrate. We know it works. It's being done across the country, including Colorado. It's affordable and visible and effective. So in conclusion, we should demand better for our kids and do everything in our power to keep them safe in school. And I ask this board to prioritize security funding in your budget decisions. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And I'll repeat what I said to the prior public participant. If there's things you want to share with us via email that you didn't have time to do in public comment, please feel free to send that onto the board.
I appreciate that. Two minutes is short.
It is very short.
Thank you.
Our last public participant is virtual as well, and that's Chris Stevenson Drake.
Thank you very much for your time. I am also here to talk about the safety and security of our children. I am also working with Erica Solove and have had the opportunity to meet with people to talk about this issue. I would like, rather than spend my two minutes to repeat what she has said, to add on to the fact that although we know that school shootings, mass shootings, are not as high in number as other kinds of violence, we are looking for additional and improved measures to our school buildings to help protect our children. Therefore, the ballistic glass, for example, is very important as far as helping our children be safe within them and keeping intruders out. Statistics show and experts agree that keeping intruders out of schools or away from buildings and specific classrooms are the best way to lower these kinds of incidents. Therefore, I reiterate what Erica Solove has said and am requesting that increased funding be put toward security measures, improving upon what is already being done and adding to where there are gaps. This is ballistic glass, on all glass outside, and ballistic or bulletproof glass on the inside of our buildings. We also need fencing. If it's possible to get fencing around our schools, that helps keep intruders out. Finally, internal cameras. I know these are possibly things that are contentious, but more measures like this can help responders and help keep intruders out. With these things, I will also send the board our information. Again, I reiterate that I would like to ask that more funding be put toward these security measures. They are research-based and experienced in terms of what is working and what is not. We're starting to have a better understanding of what does keep kids safer in our schools. This is definitely something that should be a priority in BVSD. Thank you.
Thank you. And board members, I'll direct your attention to your email because the one public speaker who didn't make it today put her public comments in an email to us. So I just want to make sure that people see that in their emails from Peggy Dara. So I think that concludes our public participation around budget. Laura, is there any? I think that's all, right?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That concludes our public. What am I hearing?
Excuse me. A quick housekeeping question. The email to send the comments or additional information to, is that Laura Schaefer?
You can send it to Laura, and she'll distribute it to the board.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Sorry to sign you up, Laura, but you get a lot of emails that way, and you just send them on to us.
I do.
And Mr. Sutter, is there anything else we need to be doing for public participation for the budget? Rob? Okay. Then I will. Is there a motion to adjourn this portion of the meeting? Moved by Nicole, seconded by Kitty. And we have about 14 minutes till our next meeting starts. Amala? Everybody?
Ready.
All right, let's rock and roll. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023. Board members may attend and participate by electronic means in regular or special meetings of the Board in accordance with Policy BEAA and state law. Board members who attend and participate by electronic means shall identify the location from which they are participating, those present. We are all present tonight. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Niznick.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you.
We'll begin our meeting as we always do with our land acknowledgement. Nicole Raj Paul, will you please read the land acknowledgement?
My pleasure. Boulder Valley School District resides and operates on land that is the ancestral homeland and unjustly illegally taken territory of the Ute, Puebloan, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Apache, Navajo, and 48 other tribal nations historically tied to this land who have called this land home since time immemorial. We acknowledge the atrocities committed here, including the painful history of genocide, forced assimilation, and efforts to alienate the indigenous inhabitants from their homeland, supported by the policies of the US government. BVSC is aware of the many indigenous peoples, past and present, and their dignified nations and cultures who care for the land with strength and resilience. BVSC recognizes the histories of the land in Colorado and the survival of the many nations that carry their oral traditions into the present. It is BVSC's responsibility to educate ourselves, our communities, and our students so we can embrace the wisdom and knowledge of indigenous peoples and actively stand together to address injustices. In offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm and honor the history, wisdom, oral traditions, and resilience of indigenous people and recognize their responsibility to care for and appreciate this land together.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us electronically on BV22. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, is there a motion to approve our agenda for the evening?
So...
Moved by Kitty, seconded by Nicole... Sorry, by Stacy. Could you call the roll, please?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Niznick.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll begin tonight as we always do with the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Board President Gephardt, members of the Board. It's great to see everybody tonight. So it is graduation season, and what a wonderful weekend we had here in BVSD. I was able to attend multiple graduations along with many of you this past weekend. Friday night, Monarch High School. Saturday was a triple header of Broomfield High School, Boulder High, and then Centaurus High School, and then Sunday, Fairview High. I know we also had Peak to Peak, which was a Netherlands high school, Netherlands Saturday morning, Peak to Peak, right before Monarch High, and we have... And then we have on Wednesday, we have several more. But I wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate the class of 2023. For anybody who had a senior graduating or was able to attend our events, you just know how impressive our students are. Just sitting and listening to their accomplishments is just such an honor, and it was just really great to participate in those ceremonies. So we have three more on Wednesday, and then New Vista wraps us up on Saturday at Chautauqua. And so we had more than 2,400 seniors graduating over the course of these next two weeks, and just so proud of the class of 2023. Speaking of proud, today we had the opportunity to celebrate our Transitions students who are transitioning out of the program after graduation. These 18 to 21-year-old students from our Special Education Program will receive some additional... After graduation, sorry, these students until they're 21 receive additional support around skills they'll be able to use around home and work. And 21 students today graduating out of the Transitions Program. I don't think there was a dry eye in the House. It was held in this room right where we're at this evening, and just so much love and care and hope and joy. It was just a wonderful event. So congrats to all of our Transition students who are transitioning out of that program, and this is really neat. It was really neat. Speaking of graduations, we have a theme here. We had our first cohort of the Community Leadership Academy that graduated last Friday, celebrated all the parents and community members who participated with us over four sessions over the course of the semester. They were able to gather here during those four sessions for several hours to learn more about our school district, learn more about leadership, community leadership, opportunities for school district leadership. Want to share a special thank you to Stacy Corney, who's the new Executive Director of Parent Engagement Network, who was our partner, and also the folks at Parent Engagement Network, and really helped this program come to life over the course of the past semester. Think is something that many of us have wanted to do for quite some time, really create an opportunity for folks in our community, our parents, just learn more about the district and figure out how to plug in and take on leadership roles, whether that be at schools or within the district. So that was wonderful. So at the end of the school year, lots of events and celebrations, board members, as you can imagine, going on at our schools. And this morning, we had a special one at Columbine Elementary. Staff and community participated in the Mile Marathon. This is the 45th year of this event, started one year before the Boulder Boulder. And as we're told, it's the largest children's footrace west of the Mississippi. I don't know. I'm gonna have to take their word on that one, but that's fantastic. And so it was great to have our students at Columbine today. Speaking of neat events, students from the Construction Trades Class at Boulder Tech tested their skills this morning by launching a boat they built this semester at Boulder Reservoir. Boulder Tech staff and parents came out for the maiden voyage. You could see the boat right there. I mean, it's beautiful. Their instructor, Mr. Joshua Coffey, said students in Construction Trades Class learned engineering, architecture, and construction. Marine structures are the most difficult kind of construction they built, is they have to be constantly in motion, watertight, and float, a very important aspect of building marine structures. We're proud to report that the boat survived the test. We're wishing them fair winds and following seas, or at least that they had a good time and enjoyed the barbecue afterwards. And then finally, as a big part of our bilingual and proud campaign, on Saturday, May 15th, we invited all of our students that are on the bilingual pathway and their families for a big celebration. Lots of food, fun activities, a great event to really celebrate this renewed focus and emphasis on bilingualism as a key piece to our strategic plan in our Grad Plus framework. So that was wonderful. And finally, board members, now for our student moment, and for our student moment tonight, I'm excited to introduce CJ Fair, one of Monarch High School's finest students. While he walked with his class from Mohi last year, he stayed with BVSD for an extra year so he could participate in a free year of college through the Ascent Program. And board members, as you can recall, we've been really celebrating increased interest in Ascent. It's a great program that aligns with our Grad Plus framework, aims to give students more than a diploma, including college credit when they leave high school. CJ will officially receive his diploma this year and through Ascent in the college courses he took while at Mohi and Boulder Tech. He's more than halfway done with college already, and if my sources are correct, CJ wants to be a guidance counselor, if I have that right. So CJ, it's good to see you. Come on up. We're excited to hear from you.
Yes, thank you all for having me tonight. I'm very excited to be here and to kind of share my journey with Grad Plus and Ascent in Boulder Valley. I was just gonna kind of walk y'all through how I was able to get so much done. And for me, it was actually three short years. I moved to Boulder Valley my sophomore year. I had one AP class at that point, so I had almost nothing ready. And I started pretty quickly with concurrent enrollment and continuing AP classes. So I was able to do AP World History, AP Psychology, and AP Biology, a couple other classes, and get a lot of credit through that. But what I liked a lot more was concurrent enrollment classes. So I did algebra, trigonometry, microeconomics, biology, quite a few different concurrent enrollment classes. And I liked these a lot more than AP because the credit is based off of your performance throughout an entire semester, not just one test at the end of the year. I also was able to participate in Boulder Tech classes. I was one of four students to go through all four programs, including the brand-new Innovations Program at Boulder Tech, the Biomed. So I was extremely happy to do that. Like, full disclaimer, this was probably my favorite thing that I did. I loved Ms. Evans, the teacher. She was an amazing teacher, incredibly engaging. I did probably some of the most cool technology things I will ever do at Boulder Tech. I was able to clone bacteria cells. And I also got quite a bit of college credit from this. I was able to get Anatomy and Physiology I and II through the Missouri University of Science and Technology, which Boulder Tech has partnered with to get this credit. And I also got a couple just general biology credits, which are just helpful for getting to my recommended 120 credits. And for most of the time in college, I was working towards a degree in nursing, which is extremely helpful because nursing is a pretty universal degree. It has these clearly laid-out prerequisites, and this is what I was basing pretty much everything on. That's why I did Boulder Tech. And then I transferred or graduated and went to the Ascent Program and went to Front Range Community College. And I was, again, through this, working towards nursing. And I realized if I was able to transfer to Metro State University of Denver, I would be in a better spot because they have an actual nursing program. It was mind-blowing at the time. I was like, oh, my gosh, I can get two birds with one stone at Metro State, Ascent, and nursing. So thankfully, Ms. Brockish worked with me, and we were able to successfully transfer over to Metro State University. And I started a career as a nursing assistant, and I hated it.
[laughter]
So I made a big switch to public health. And again, Ms. Brockish was extremely helpful in guiding me through this process and getting all of my credits transferred and helping Ascent was kind of a cushion for me because I had so much nursing credit. I was like, if I paid for however much nursing credit I had at that point, I would have stuck with it, and I would be miserable. So Ascent and college before graduation was kind of a cushion for me because I was like lump sum. I've spent time, but I haven't spent the money getting all of this credit. So it was able for me to transition over to public health, which is the current degree that I have. So now that I've graduated, unfortunately, I can't get any more free college. So now that I've graduated, unfortunately, I can't get any more free college, but I have 76 credits completed right now, and I need 46 more. So it's about three semesters of college, which I'm gonna do over at CU Denver, and hopefully get that done pretty quick. And again, move on to guidance counseling, and my goal is to work for Boulder Valley because we're the best school district. Thank you.
Thank you, CJ. What a, what an inspiring story. And just board members, just, you know, just, you know, just kind of speaks to the opportunities that we're really fostering here in BVSD. And that is all I have for my superintendent's remarks.
That was awesome. Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments for Dr. Anderson, Stacy?
So I've said this a couple times, but that was my favorite student moment we've ever had. So thank you.
Anyone else? Rob, I was able to attend the graduation on Friday of the BVSD Leadership, and I just want to say thanks to you and Stacy. We had initially like 80 people apply to do it, and I don't know how many graduates we had, but maybe 50, 40-something. And it was just really exciting, and it was a good way for people to see who was there because we hadn't really had a chance, other than table talk, for people to understand who was in the room. And I'm really excited to see what BVSD Leadership, if we can have different levels, like if we can have those who have already graduated, can move on to the next level and kind of address more sophisticated issues, and then make sure that we have newcomers coming to this. So I'm really excited to see what next year brings with BVSD Leadership. And, and for those of you who weren't there, Rob did a great, I see some graduates in the audience. For, for those of you who weren't there, Rob did a great job just explaining to people all the touchpoints about how you can be involved in BVSD. And I was thinking back to my own, when I started and my kids were in kindergarten, I would never have thought that I could reach out to a board member or superintendent if I had a question. And I think people started to learn that we are approachable and that it's actually something that's not this big barrier. If you have a question, you can talk to a board member, you can talk to the superintendent. So I'm really excited to see where this program takes us, and I'm hoping that it helps people feel more, feel more connected and more engaged with our community. So thanks to you and to Stacy and to everybody who helped put that together because I think it was a big success the first time. I mean, you're always a little worried that if you put it out there and no one engages, what's gonna happen? And we kind of had the opposite, which was nice. So thank you for doing that. And that was an awesome student moment. So best of luck to you, and we hope to see you around the halls of BVSD someday. So thank you. I have to get to where I'm supposed to be now. All right, next, we have public participation. We will now begin the public participation section of the board's meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's meeting were asked to sign up prior to noon today by submitting their request to speak during public participation forum that can be found on the BVSD website, or by contacting the board secretary Laura Schaefer. Public participants have the option to attend the meeting in person or join and present their comments via Google Meet. The board respects the rights of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. The board does not endorse the comments of any speaker and reminds all who speak that they are responsible for their own speech. Please note that this is a listening opportunity for the board, and the board does not engage in dialogue or answer questions as part of public participation. The board needs time to consider the comments made and may include items on future board meeting agendas to address issues raised by our public and community. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board, one, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Two, recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. Please limit your presentation to two minutes. If you run out of time or would like to share additional information, you may email the board. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, you will see the orange card. Please wrap up your comments at the end of your two minutes. A timer will sound, and your microphone will be muted. Tonight, we have several speakers addressing non-agenda items. Our first speaker is Mandy Nuku. Do you, do you want to speak this? It's fine. I just wanted to make sure. So come on up.
I wasn't sure I could do it in two minutes the first time. I'm Mandy Nuku, and I am the parent of three current BVSD students. I spoke at the budget session, and I wanted to say my comments again. Our son, as a young black student at Angivine, does not feel this is a safe place to learn, and I'm frustrated and angry with the negligence of administration. Students, particularly students of color like our son, have experienced significant harm and missed days of instruction time. With an all-new administration next year, Angivine needs more support, not less. Because the issues we are facing at Angivine are not new to BVSD or isolated to our school alone, I am asking that BVSD invest in equity. While there are spaces for diverse parent and student voices to be heard, there is little to no accountability or action from district leadership in response to what is shared in these spaces. While we are incredibly fortunate to have deeply committed leaders in the Equity and Engagement Team, it's not enough. Their work and the affirming spaces created are invaluable, and one of the reasons my son feels safe at school and is able to attend any day, honestly. However, two people are not enough for 56 schools, given the pervasive racism happening. I'd like to see an expansion of the Equity and Engagement Team, particularly at the cabinet level, so there can be timely and systemic action. Until the equity work is a true pressure on the BVSD budget, there will be no imperative to solve the pervasive racism happening. If this is currently in a cabinet leader's scope of work, then let me tell you, the current structure in place isn't working. Emails, complaints, concerns, including our own, do not get addressed at all, or if they do, it takes months. All will harm, harassment, and racial discrimination continue to happen, happen in violation of Title VI. And with that, I'd like to see more education for the community around Title VI, similarly to what's offered for Title IX in terms of presentations to the community, to parents, and to educators and administrators. Our experience is not unique, and I'm here in solidarity with the many Latino families at Angivine who have been begging for change, as well as the other parents of Black students who face the same harm or have left the school or district altogether because their kids are unsafe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And again, I'll repeat what I had told you when you were here for budget, which is if there's additional comments or you want to share that with us, send them to Laura, and she will make sure that the board gets them. So thank you. Next, we have Laura Collins.
And I do see Sarah on the call.
Yes. Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
I'm back. Hi.
Sarah's been given, has given you two extra minutes.
She has, yes.
Just so the public knows why we said that. To give somebody extra time, you actually have to be here, or at least be here virtually. So go ahead.
Hi. My name is Laura Collins. I am a survivor of the Marshall Fire. I'm here like every two weeks, which is why they all recognize me at this point. I am here today to continue to share the concerns of our community about the lack of data BVSD has provided, to verify that the eight schools impacted by the Marshall Fire are indeed free of toxins. As a reminder, over two months ago, we had 400 signatures on a petition requesting BVSD test the eight schools. Two weeks ago, I was here, and since then, Rob Price has sent out an email to our community with the results from testing at Fireside Elementary. I do want to thank Rob for sending out the full data from the lab versus a high-level summary, so we appreciate that level of transparency so that we can see that data. I'm also very happy and relieved that Fireside seems to be clean and safe for the students there. So that's great news. But I still have concerns. I have three of them. So my first concern is that Fireside was reclaimed a few weeks before this testing was done. So this was reclaimed because a parent found char in the classroom, and it was in a place where elementary students could easily access it. And for those of you who don't know, the toxins can seep in through your skin. So BVSD cleaned it over spring break, and then the data was collected, and your email to the community touches upon the fact that schools can be reclaimed, but it's not very transparent. And so people are going to think that this data is of a school that was cleaned after the Marshall Fire versus something that was reclaimed a few weeks ago. My second concern is that the seven or eight schools that were impacted by the fire are as many as six miles apart. So those of you who have experienced smoke damage will know that my house, sitting right here, could have smoke damage, and your house, Nicole, two houses over, could test and be safe. The reason why is because of construction of your home. How old are your windows are like one of the biggest things. And so if you look at these schools, if you look at LES is 60 years old, and, and they did find, you know, ash on their window sills on the inside, which is what I found in my house, which took 10 months to remediate, and I had to throw out 90% of our belongings. So the data from one school of Fireside should not, and the experts will tell you this, be extrapolated to represent the other seven schools. It's completely not a best practice in the industry, and it's misleading. My third level, my third concern is a really big one. So the laboratory that your industrial hygienist used is called Liberty Enviro Lab. Now, all of these labs who take these datas and then you analyze it, they have to be certified, right? So you want to make sure that these people know what they're actually doing. This lab is not certified. So Rob, I hope you can take note of that. I know you did not hire this lab directly. It was your environmental consultant that did that. But back in April 29th, when you first shared that this is the lab that was doing it, I did a Google search. I spent three hours looking this up, and I don't know if people can see this, but this is what the Google search showed. It showed Liberty Enviro Lab had no phone number, had no website, had no information there. So I found Liberty Enviro Lab, website under construction. I thought that was a little strange for BVSD to be using a lab that was under construction. So I looked at it. It was founded in July of last year. It's not even a year old. So that's a little suspicious. I looked today, guess what? They have a website, so now they look legitimate. But this was not there three weeks ago. I have the timestamps of all of these screens. I went to the AIHA, which is the organization that certifies these laboratories, and did a search for Liberty Enviro Lab. Liberty does not exist. I spoke to someone there. They are not accredited. So I would like you guys to note that the lab that you used is not accredited, and we would like to have an accredited lab. Thank you for your time. See you after summer.
Thank you. Next, we have Elijah McLendon.
Hi there. My name's Elijah McLendon. I'm not great at this, public speaking stuff. I am the new American Indian parent, teacher, community, voluntold, volunteer. So I am, help, my main task is to help Native Americans, Asian Pacific Islanders, Alaskan Intuit to get the funding that they need here. I was voluntold because I was raised in Oklahoma, which is totally different, and I got my degree from Fort Lewis College without a single student debt. I'm very fortunate. These ideas and these things were not given to me. I'm here today for two things in particular. Number one, the board agreed to put Indigenous Peoples' Day on the calendar. This is the simple one, right? Like, we agreed to put that on, take that day off, put it on the calendar. The day is off now. It's just not on the calendar as Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's on the calendar as a faculty day. That's an insult to our people. Like, it's great. Thank you for the day off, but just put it on the calendar. Super fix. Just fix that. Number two is that we get 100% of our funding from grants, and 75, and the only grants we get is for $22,000, which is nickels and dimes in this world. 75% of that $22,000 goes to Yvette right here, and we only get her for 20 hours, I think, something very minimal, 20 hours. There is a great need for us to identify Native students, everybody that I just identified, to get them into the system as minorities. It's great for our school district in particular. Nobody's signing up for these things because I didn't know that it even existed in this school district until this year. And my schools, my son has been in the school district for seven years. We need to get this out, and we are one of the few school districts. I grew up in a place where the school district paid for a liaison such as Yvette. We, the school district pays none of it. We raised $22,000, which is nothing. $18,000 of it goes to Yvette for a minimal amount of time that she puts probably five times the amount of energy into. What I'm asking is, I, I can give you all sorts of statistics in this 1.4 minutes that I have here, but the reality is, is that I'm here to ask that we talk about having a full-time employee paycheck, a real paycheck for Title VI, which is what we're talking about right now, twice here. We need a full-time employee for a Title VI liaison that is funded by BVSD. To take 18% of the money that we are, it takes 75% of her time to raise just to pay her? All of this is just insanity. We are at a place and time where we need to get more minorities enrolled to just say that they are who they are. And in order to do that, we need funding to, to help get that marketing out to get those people up to date. Mr. Anderson, thank you for coming to the graduation ceremony. It was an amazing ceremony. I hope you enjoyed it. I hope you come again next year. University of Colorado is employing a chancellor of Native American peoples to bring more people in. We are the first funnel of those people to get students into that, that level of academia, especially as a minority coming in. It is very hard. Thank you for your time. You heard my two points. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public participation. Is that correct, Laura?
That's correct.
Okay. So we will now move on to the next agenda item, which is board communication. Board members, who would like to begin? Kitty? Oh, Stacy.
Just quickly, want to thank all of our speakers and our, of course, our student moment, which is my favorite. And I also want to congratulate the class of 2023. Go do great things. And it's really exciting that we could have decent weather for the graduations, which was not the case last year, and just hope everything went well for all the families.
All right, now Kitty, and then Beth.
So I've shaken almost as many hands as Rob. I was here today for transitions, so that's my seventh graduation this week, and I would have gone to Nederland, but it conflicted. But I love going to graduations. I used to hate graduations, but it is so great to see the kids, to look them in the eye and, you know, tell them they've done a good job. And, you know, they're so excited. And I have a few observations that I've learned from graduation. One, best handshaker goes to Centaurus High School. Those kids knew how to shake hands. It's a good thing, parents, to teach your kids how to shake hands and look somebody in the eye because it's a skill they're going to need. Other things I've noticed are things like fashions. Well, we don't see their clothes, but, you know, the one, the stuff we see, facial piercings, definitely way more facial piercings than I've ever seen. And the other thing I really like looking at is the girls' shoes. And it sounds funny, but when that many people are walking across the stage, you start to notice. And in years past, they've all worn spiky heels and sometimes got those heels stuck in the stairs on wrecked field. Well, this year, chunky heels are in style, and the most common shoe style I saw was a, an ankle strap sandal with a chunky heel. And so those are some of the fun things about graduations. You know, obviously, I'm proud of the kids. I want to congratulate the class of 2023. I'm looking forward to attending more graduations, and my goal every year is to attend all of them if I can. The next thing I want to say is CJ, congratulations to you. It is so great to hear from you, and I hope other students are paying attention to what you did, and I'm sure your parents are thrilled to save the money that they would have spent for you to get halfway through college on their dime. So that's wonderful. I don't think I have anything else, so.
Beth?
I really enjoyed tonight's student moment as well, so I want to start there with you, CJ. Thanks so much. Congratulations on all of your determination and all of your incredible success. Keep it up, and we really hope to see you again in a few short years at this rate back in BVSD. I also want to thank all of tonight's speakers concerned by some of the comments around Title VI and racism and those comments. So thank you for sharing that with us tonight. I also, I'll join in in saying congratulations to the class of 2023. I also, I'll join in in saying congratulations to the class of 2023. I'm looking forward to joining for a couple graduations tomorrow. And finally, I just want to express my deepest gratitude to all of our staff members out there. We've got two more sleeps until this school year is done and on the books. I think we're all tired but excited. I love being around schools at the end of the year. The energy is just zany in the best possible way. So thanks to all the teachers, all the paraeducators, all of our staff that make this happen. Hope you have a great summer.
Richard?
Thank you. Thank you. CJ, you're doing exactly what ascent was designed to do, and I really, really congratulate you for what your accomplishments have been. I only wish that we could see 300, 400 more of you here next time, okay? Because it does, it does do all the things that Beth and Kitty suggested, that it saved your parents a lot of money. You're way ahead of the curve in terms of getting through school and all of that wonderful stuff, so congratulations. And I want to thank all the speakers that came here tonight. And I just want to also congratulate the class of 2023. I did go to Centaurus, and again, Centaurus always puts out a great graduation ceremony, and I'm going to say what I've said every graduation at Centaurus, and that is the stand-up graduates for Sigma Cum La Di, Magna Cum La Di, Engineering, IB, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that many students stand up, but very, very few students of color. Then when they ask all the Avid students to stand up, the Avid students stand up, and then that's when you see students of color. Not to say that Avid is not a great program. It is a great program because it does teach the, teach the kids the study skills that they need. But I would like to see a lot more of our kids of color be in those particular, in that crowd when they stand up and be celebrated. I have been asking for eight years now that we do something about funding our Indian Ed program to a place where we can have a great program. And we do have a great program, but we do need more time for our people at the Indian Ed program. And I'm hoping that we can do something with that in the future. I will be attending another graduation on Saturday, which is New Vista, a special school for me. My daughter graduated from New Vista, and I always make it a point to go to the New Vista graduation because I like to see all the kids and the special performances that they put together. So with that, congratulations, class of 2023, and look forward to seeing a lot more graduations, not in a formal, official capacity, but informal, because November, as you all know, will be the last month that Richard Garcia will be sitting here at the podium, as well as my friend Kathy Gephardt, we're both term limited, and a couple of other board members. And hopefully, you'll be getting four brand-new, great board members to support the great work of the school district.
Thanks. I wanted to say, send my gratitude for everybody that took the time to come, both provide comment on our budget this evening and comments in this general session of the meeting as well. My takeaway from CJ's moment was these programs do exactly what they're set out to do. Sometimes we need to learn what we don't want to do in life to find the path we're destined for. And so giving students the opportunity to find their passion and find the things they really detest is part of the process. And I hope our students lean into that as we continue to expand our dual enrollment programs, our ascent program, the CTU and Grad Plus work. Take the things you think you might not like and take the things you think you might like because you never really know where you're passionate until you give it a try. So thank you for sharing that. I also wanted to congratulate our seniors. It was, it is always fun to go to graduations. I try to rotate every year to spread my love around. And while I don't think the students are really particularly keen on seeing us there, I have heard from members of the, shaking those hands. It does mean something to the members of our community to have us there, whether it be their parents or the staff. I've heard from a lot of folks saying, or, you know, even through the grapevine, that they do appreciate when board members show up to these events. And it is just a really exciting time for these students and these families and these teachers to see all of these humans that they get at such a small age really develop and grow into these, these very optimistic young adults. And to see the volume of chords and just the different types of paths that these students are on has been really great. And so congratulations, class of 2023. Congratulations to all the, their families and the teachers that got them through. And I hope everybody enjoys their summer breaks.
Lisa?
You know, at the risk of being a bit repetitive, congratulations to the class of 2023. Congratulations to their parents. As the parent of small children, I'm a little bit less enthusiastic for summer break, but I admit that our teachers deserve a couple months off. CJ, fantastic. Really, thank you so much for coming tonight. We all enjoyed hearing from you. And Mandy and Elijah, thank you so much. That's new information and something for me to dig into deeper. Thank you all for speaking.
And I will be repetitive as Lisa was. Thank you, CJ. And as Nicole said, I think it was brave to share that you had dived into being a nurse, and I'm thinking, where is this going? I thought Rob said he was going to be a counselor. And I did get the wrong information. And so to share that kind of journey, I thought, was really helpful and really meaningful. And for students to hear that, I mean, we can say it all day long, find your passion, but to hear it from a student who's actually doing that was really meaningful. So thanks for doing that and continue to spread the word. I too went to some graduations. I want to do a shout out to Laura De La Cruz's speech at Netherlands. I'm still thinking about it. It was great. Maybe she can share that sometime. Had to do with astrophysics, I think. And anyway, it was, it was really good. And then what moved me at the graduations I went to, this was a class that had started during the pandemic, so they'd been through a lot together. And the stories, the individual stories, there was an individual story at Centaurus and an individual story at Fairview of students. And the camera covered the student at Fairview who had had a very rare kidney disease, and he talked about what it was like to be in the hospital and to be dreaming about stars and to just have the courage to get up and share that. I think, as you would have said, Rob, I don't know the many dry eyes after we listened to him, and just to know the individual stories that these students have gone through to get to the, you know, the finish line of graduating, and then to share those was just really meaningful for those of us who could hear it. So thank you to the teachers for getting those students there. Thank you to the parents. Thank you to everybody, because I'll just join in on the, you know, congratulations to the class of 2023. Hopefully, future classes won't have to go through pandemics and all of the things that they went through to get to where they are, but they made it. And I think it forged some bonds in these classes, is what I heard from teachers and from students, that are lifetime bonds and lifetime lessons that they will carry with them. And it seems like so long ago that we were sitting here with masks or having to do this remotely, and it wasn't that long ago, and those students kind of helped us remember that. And then the only other thing I wanted to talk about really briefly is, while I was gone attending my son's wedding, I wasn't really able to, like, totally walk away from work. And so I was on a panel, the Colorado Advisory Committee to the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights. And the reason I bring it up is they're looking at intra-district boundaries. And since all of the school districts I know of along the front range are looking at declining enrollment, we're all going to be redrawing boundaries for schools because that's just the way it's going to end up being, I think, when we have diminishing enrollment and diminishing participation in some of our schools. And it was encouraging to me that they're, they're trying to look at this, and we don't have the same challenges, I don't believe, as a Denver or a Jeffco, just because our numbers are so much smaller. But I think we should pay really careful attention to what we do when we're redrawing our boundaries and see what we can do to kind of not just look at numbers, but to look at the impact that those boundaries will have on our students and the participation and the outcomes in the school. So it won't be while I'm on the board, but I'll be paying attention, and it'll be really interesting to see what kind of outcomes come from that. One of the more outrageous suggestions was that we just bus every student to every school that they want. And I was frantically texting Rob Price to ask him what that might cost. And I don't think we can come up with a number. I think the answer was a lot, and more than we can put in our budget. But thanks, Rob, for helping me try to get through that. So anyway, I think it'll be a challenge, but it's a challenge I think we're up to, and I'm really looking forward to how we deal with that. So I think that's it for public comment, but go CJ, go rock the world. So next, we are on to information. We have...
Can I say one more thing? Of course.
I got so excited talking about graduation that I forgot to say thank you to the speakers. And thank you for the two speakers who brought up the Title VI problems. And I also would like us to find a way to provide funding for the Native American program. And just one more thing about CJ, finding out you hated nursing. When my older daughter went to college, I looked up to see how many kids changed their majors, 80%. So not a surprise, but you found out at a good time.
So Rob, do you want to do the introduction?
I would love to do the introduction. Thank you so much. So board members, as you'll recall, we had shared with you all, maybe in my comments, that over the course of last semester and the beginning of this semester, that the Colorado Department of Education came in and did some review of our gifted and talented programming. This is something that happens once every five years. And we got the results of that, and we're here to share the results with the board and the community today. I will say, as Nativity gets ready to, to share, we have work to do in this area, and I think that you'll also know that we have some significant resource challenges. So the CDE comes in and does an audit and makes some recommendations, and we'll share those. But I think we get maybe a little more than $50 a kid to support gifted and talented education from the state of Colorado. So I think that's a barrier that we'll have to kind of think about. And so today's presentation is more just a review of the review, and then we can potentially talk about some high-level next steps, but we don't have this solved yet for sure. So just want to set the context for the presentation. Dr. Miller, take it away.
Good evening, President Gephardt, members of the board. Dr. Anderson, thank you for the time today to provide some information on gifted education Our gifted education work is in direct alignment with our strategic plan. Our goals are to provide challenging, engaging, and relevant instruction, as well as customized supports, and providing a positive and inclusive culture. As we begin working through improving our gifted education in BVSD, engaging in community and family partnerships will also be an essential part with, of our work. To begin sharing some current statistics and happenings in gifted education, I am going to pass it to Dr. Michelle Dubois, who is our gifted coordinator for the, for the district.
As you can see, BVSD has 5,135 identified GT students within our schools, which is 17% of our student population. 12% of these students are identified as FRL, 16% identify as twice exceptional, and 10% identifies Latinx. We're also excited to share that 250 of our BVSD employees have engaged in GT or advanced differentiation training throughout the course of this school year. Currently, in gifted education, we have several highlights of current happenings. One of our focus areas this year has been providing gifted learning and resources through GT family engagement events. This is the second year that we've held district elementary-level GT Latinx events for our GT Latinx families. This year, with the implementation of a universal sixth-grade screener, we've implemented GT middle-level family events with guest speakers at the district level. We're also proud to partner with the Boulder Valley Gifted and Talented to host state and national experts in gifted education. Another focus this area this year has been on forming two district gifted education councils. The GT Youth Advisory Council is a 20-member council comprised of students from middle and high school levels. The Gifted Education Advisory Council is a 12-member family council comprised of families with GT students in BVSD. These councils have been able to review current GT services in BVSD and make recommendations for improvements. Professional learning is an important part of providing tools to educators working with gifted students. This year, we've provided six college-accredited gifted-centered courses and a monthly differentiation training offering for staff in BVSD and other surrounding districts. This year, we were able to universally screen all second and sixth graders for a GT identification. The screening funds are applied for annually through a CDE universal screening grant. We've also been able to, for the first time, begin identifying in the talent domain areas through the use of portfolios in our Project Talent Initiative. We recently held the first-ever Project Talent Showcase where 40 students showcased their talents and portfolios at the Ed Center. This year, with a focus on equity and opportunity, we've collaborated with the district math team to provide accelerated math options to schools. The district gifted education team is also a member of the Opportunity and Access Unit, which Dr. Miller oversees. As part of this team, we are able to collaborate and connect with other district departments to provide expertise from the field of gifted education. As many of you know, BVSD had a gifted education monitoring review, also known as a GEM, this past fall. The GEM is a state monetary system completed by the Colorado Department of Education. GEMS are required by districts every four years to review and measure what is known as Exceptional Children's Education Act, or the ECEA laws. Throughout the GEM, there are 14 areas of review that provide districts' recommendations in accordance to the Exceptional Children's Education Act. Our goal today is to share the themes that have been recommended to BVSD for alignment of such review areas. To explain the components of the recommendations, I'm now going to pass it back to our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Nativity Miller.
All right. To provide some background, the GEM was completed this fall, which included six school visits, multiple listening sessions with teachers, administrators, parents, and student groups. The review included individual interviews, focus groups, educator, administrative, and parent surveys, and a review of students' advanced learning plans and related documents. There were a total of 289 stakeholders who participated in the review. While there were significant increases in the findings towards the compliance for BVSD, the GEM identified four areas for continued improvement: communication, resources, services, and advanced learning plans. As we begin our journey in improving gifted education in BVSD, today we'll share with you current structures and recommendations in each of those areas. And the first area of improvement was identified in the GEM was in the area of communication. In the area of communication, we have a variety of structures that were identified for our district. There is a clear communication channel from our district team to those identified as gifted support staff in various parent groups. GT advisors collaborate with staff to develop advanced learning plan goals based on identification of a student, and the gifted team responds to school requests for advanced learning plan support and understanding. There appears to be consistent communication with advisory councils and GT parent working groups. Additionally, we have several recommendations for our district for improvement in the area of communication. To increase our communication structures directly from the schools to the identified gifted students and families, it is also recommended that we develop a clear process to invite parents into the advanced learning plan process. It is recommended that we plan for consistent time with leaders and schools to provide knowledge and understanding of the gifted laws and the elements of an advanced learning plan. And the last recommendation was that we work to increase our communication from the school level to the district, to school level, to parent groups, councils, and parent partners. Our second recommendation, our area of improvement from our GEM was in the area of resources. In the area of resources, our current structures, we have gifted, our gifted programming is personnel and school-dependent due to a lack of a required model. Each school provides such services differently. Gifted classified staffing varies and has been allocated based on student enrollment. However, that allocation has recently changed and is now based on the advanced learning plans. Our GTA hours of service for schools has the ability to provide school screeners and identification of students while limited time allocation for service delivery models. However, it was identified... However, it was identified in our GEM that BVSD has improved significantly in expanding screening and identification in students in a variety of gifted areas. Our list of recommendations in the area of resources is follows. Begin to work to develop consistent gifted programming models across schools. Think about how we can allocate more consistent resources. Increase gifted certified staffing resources that can focus on gifted education learning, expanding services for identification... I'm sorry. Learning services, expanding from identification to learning. And as a district, begin to review the gifted budget allocation that would allow to provide more gifted education services to our students. Our third area of improvement was in the area of services. Our current structures in this area are as follows. Gifted education services are school-dependent and based on the independent school structure. Schools that have gifted identified personnel have developed services and are making positive progress that meet the needs of their identified gifted students and advanced learning plans. Professional learning is provided by the district gifted education team on a regular basis through the late-start structures, with clear outcomes for learning and positive feedback for applicability to instruction. The recommendations for services in BVSD are: Establish a gifted education program model that can be implemented across schools, starting at the elementary level. Begin creating a consistent partnership with schools and the district team to support gifted education at the school level. And work to create professional learning structures for both leaders and teachers that are required to provide consistent learning and instructional practices at the school level. And the last recommendation that was provided to us from the GEM was in the area of advanced learning plans. Again, our current structures in this area are as follows. Our classified gifted and talented advisors are trained in advanced learning plans and are working to collaborate with staff and families on developing an advanced learning plan goals. Our gifted education district team is providing support to our gifted and talented advisors on the components of advanced learning plans. And advanced learning plans are provided to parents at the beginning of the school year to assist them in understanding a child's goals. The recommendations for advanced learning plans are: To provide professional learning to our leaders and teachers in schools so that there is a solid understanding of the components of such plans and how it can be supported at the school level. It is recommended that we work to create a system that provides support with implementation and monitoring of the advanced learning plans at the school level so that schools can implement instructional practices and communication to families. And finally, to provide professional learning across our system on gifted education compliance laws, as well as understanding the gifted learner and instructional strategies that support identified students. As you can see, we have some gifted education structures and recommendations in the areas of communication, resources, services, and with advanced learning plans. Our district team has made some progress in the various areas and are proud of the work that we have done specifically in the area of our advisory councils, as well as with our gifted and talented advisors. However, we recognize and agree with the many recommendations that the gifted education monitoring review provided us, and we are beginning to work through both the challenges and the next steps for our district. In order to provide transparency, we would like to acknowledge the challenges that we are facing with gifted education recommendations, as well as the plans we have in developing the work through the challenges for next steps. Our current challenges are: Gifted education funding is limited from the state, and currently we have limited FTE allocations to support the level that is recommended. Many of the recommendations are dependent on additional funding allocations, and as we embark on declining enrollment, this will be a challenge that we need to spend time understanding. Our team will need to work to identify meeting the needs of gifted education within a budget structure that meets the needs of our district. Additionally, we would be remiss if we did not acknowledge that while there are many incredible changes occurring in our district, the addition of gifted program models, monitoring, advanced learning plans, and additional professional learning needs to be thought through thoroughly and with great intention before any changes are made. With that being said, we are in the process of creating our next steps for gifted education. First, our team has worked to take these recommendations and develop a multi-year implementation plan that is broken into these four recommendation areas. We will work with a variety of stakeholder groups to not only prioritize our next steps, but to also obtain input from such recommendations. We are currently reorganizing our district team structure to provide deployment support services to our schools that can immediately support instruction to meet the needs of our gifted learners. We have also adjusted our formula for our gifted and talented advisors for next year so that the time allocations are based on the number of advanced learning plan students rather than the total student population. Our team will continue to offer professional learning opportunities to the teachers in our system, and I am currently working with our executive directors to identify time at the beginning of this school year, or next school year, to provide learning about advanced learning plan law and improve our awareness this fall. While we have some challenges and several recommendations to address, our team is eager to begin planning and prioritizing the work of our gifted education in our district.
Thank you. Sorry, I was looking up a number. Board members, questions? Beth?
And then Kitty?
Thanks so much for that presentation and sharing the information tonight. Sounds like there's some good, clear next steps. Appreciate that. I guess my question really centers around, do we know anywhere that does APLs well? Like, where do we look? Who are the leaders in this regard?
I can let Michelle chat, but we also have... Our team has been doing some observations and contacting gifted leads in other districts that have recently had GEM reviews. I don't... We've been looking more at program models, but part of our work with the advanced learning plan goal will be to identify where are they writing them well and monitoring them well.
I also want to thank both of you for this presentation. It's... We haven't been doing gifted and talented well at all in the past. When my older daughter was identified in sixth grade, the only programming she got was that her counselor wrote a grant so there could be a Japanese club because she was interested in the language. And so, to see where we are now is heartening compared to, you know, over 20 years ago. And I do get the challenges, especially, you know, without the money. But I'm really glad to hear that you're putting systems in place, that you're working on it, because these are the kids we have not really been serving well. So, thank you so much, and I wish you the best in figuring it all out.
Nicole?
Thank you. I just want to say, you know, congratulations on the improvements you have really made around ALP compliance and increasing equity in GT identification of our students. I think those are celebrations that really do need to be underscored, and we have work to do. I think... I also want to point out that ECEA laws address educational needs for students identified as gifted and talented, and those students that qualify for special education services. And I think it's important for our community to understand that these kids that are identified as gifted are neurodiverse, and they have a whole host of unique needs that we need to keep in mind. So, thank you for pointing out ECEA and how it relates to our gifted students. Budget's going to be a challenge, and it doesn't mean we don't need to be thinking about equity in this population. I think we can be really creative around how... We're currently using mental health dollars to support the affective needs of some of these gifted identified students. Think about a whole host of things. But I do hear loud and clear from the community that the services part, the communication part, really do matter, and it does come into play in people's decisions around open enrollment, around school choice. And so, it is part of that conversation, broader conversation, as we're looking at declining enrollment and trends, as we're looking at boundaries and open enrollment policies. So, I think now is a really great time to start taking on this work. And I hear you that being thoughtful along the way and not overpromising in a state of declining resources is where your head is at. A question I had is around some of the ALP in school-specific ways that they're addressed. I've been hearing that a lot of the ALPs now have become heavily student- and home-focused. A lot of the work for these projects is taking place at home, where some of it used to be more in the school. And so, I was wondering if you could address that. And then, when you mentioned programming models to support students, are you considering programming models that are beyond math pathways? Students that are identified as gifted in areas other than math, particularly at the elementary school level, seem to have, or historically have had, not the breadth of opportunities as students that are identified as gifted in math. So, I was wondering if you could speak to those two components a little bit.
Yep, absolutely. So, in regards to the advanced learning plans and how they've been implemented and are monitored, we did gather a lot of data in that area, and we have some work to do. It's inconsistent across our schools, and that's one of the first things I think we need to do, is get in front of our principals and educate them on the ECEA laws, as well as, like, what are the components of an ALP? How do you monitor it? And so, that's something that we think we're going to be able to do this fall, working, as I mentioned, with executive directors on time with the principals. I don't think Michelle's presented to them ever. And so, that's a move that we can make pretty quickly in our collaboration with the executive directors and getting in front of the principals to help them understand those components, and that we don't want them being sent home to be monitored. So, I think we can do that pretty quickly. And then, the second part around programming models, we are going to be looking at a variety of options. My mighty team of two, three here is here, but we have... We've been observing in other districts. We've been looking at everything from clustering models at elementary to, you know, not necessarily FTE-dependent, but perhaps some professional learning-dependent. And so, we're looking at a lot of those options and not necessarily just like a pull-out and/or a pathway. So, those are the types of things that we're looking at.
And then, do students identified with ALPs, does that pop up in VISLAB the same way in IEP or a 504? Does that kind of trigger to a teacher when they're thinking about differentiation or extension enrichment opportunities? Does that organically pop up in the student information piece for our staff so they know? Because knowledge is power.
Yeah, in VISLAB, I believe it pops up as a purple orb. They have different orb colors, so yes. They should see that on their class list.
And one of the things through our MTSS, right, because that's also something that I hold, is we're working with our team, on the MTSS team, and collaboration with Michelle and her team, is how do we have those transition conversations at the beginning of the year with principals to know who's on an IEP, who's on an ALP, who has a 504, what's the data look like? And so, we're working to provide tools for schools to have that information so that they're aware at onset of having a student in their classroom.
Thanks. And then, one more thing, and this is, as a former DAC member, we would always ask for the gifted addendum to come out with the district's UIP, and that has always been lagging in timeline. And I wonder, in the future, if we can do a better job with our gifted addendums and timing that with our UIPs. So, our populations kind of have that full picture of what's going on in advance. So, that's just a little plug from the board seat on that one.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Richard?
Just very quickly, thank you for the presentation. And I do want to commend you with the "by the numbers" presentation. I can recall where, a few years ago, you didn't have that many Latinx students identified as GT students. And I'm glad to see that, and also your students are identified as FRLs. When you work with the bilingual schools, how do you go about identifying GT students in the bilingual schools?
Yeah. We've actually increased our percentage of bilingual students and Latinx students in our... From 2018 to where we are now with our increase, we're steadily increasing that. We actually have a variety of tests now that are in Spanish, and so, we test them that. We build a big body of evidence. Sometimes it takes us longer with our bilingual students and our CLD students because... Not because of language, but just because there's just a bigger body of evidence. We look at access scores. We also talk with our CLD folks here at the district level. So, I think, you know, we still have work to do, of course, with that, but that is one of our passionaries that we work with, and also our twice-exceptional learners.
Yeah, because then I see your students identified as twice-exceptional. I see bilingual students as being twice-exceptional, too.
Well, yes, they're twice-exceptional with their 2E. That's what we call in the field.
Right. I can understand that we are going to have some budgetary constraints and all of that one ugly stuff that we have to deal with, probably. But that shouldn't stop or prevent us from doing something with the GT population because it has been ignored for a long time. And I think we really need to put our nose to the wheel in terms of what can we do to make sure that some of these areas that have been talked about today really get attention. So, I'm hoping that we can do that.
Rob, did you want to talk before I ask my questions?
I just wanted to thank Dr. Miller and Dr. Dubois and our team that's here. I think that we understand some of the challenges, but we have incredibly talented people that are working on this, and I just wanted to share that with the board and with the community. I have full confidence in the team to be able to do the work. I think as we think about these recommendations, it's hard sometimes as a coordinator in our district to be able to create consistency without the authority or the permission. And so, you have... But we've seen this, right, throughout our district, and when things become very site-dependent, you create levels of inconsistency. And then, Nicole, to your point, as a parent of gifted kid, like, you know, you start to think about where are my kids going to go? And, you know, how seriously do they take this or not take this? Or have they prioritized or not prioritized? Or do they just happen to have gifted certified educators or not? And so, there are some things that aren't going to cost money. They're called expectations, right? And so, we're going to set some expectations, I think, around this. And then, we have to think about resource, and we have to think about what are the models that are working? Because that is incredibly important. You know, board members, I've worked in three different states, and, you know, I've seen different models and different levels of funding. And in Florida, literally, students with gifted and talented students were... They didn't call MailPs, they were like IEPs, right? And so, we know and understand that. But I just... You don't want anybody leaving this conversation thinking that it has anything to do with the talented people we have in regards to some of the challenges, right? It's around, you know, because, to your point, the screening work that's happened is incredible. And a little bit more consistency, a little more digging in, a little more support, and district support, I think that we're going to be in much better shape. And then, we just need to think and wrestle with the resource.
So, I have a couple of questions, sorry. So, Dr. Miller, you said something that caught my attention, which is there's a level that's recommended, and I'm wondering how far off we are and what that level is, if you can share that, or maybe you don't know.
Do you remember in which area I said that?
I thought it was towards the end. It was on... I think it was staff ratios.
The recommendations for staffing were to... Right now, we have our gifted advisors, our classified staffing. We have two schools that have Columbine and Lafayette Elementary have GT-certified staffing. And they... That is where we saw some pockets of excellence, where they're doing some programming because they have GT-identified staff. There wasn't... There's kind of a loose recommendation. They don't really give you a hard number of, like, you should increase by this. We're seeing across the state, school districts doing different things after... We're seeing across the state, school districts doing different things after GEMS, adding a .5 at a high school level, for example, to one of the teachers to monitor and implement ALP plans to various models at elementary. So they, they don't really land on a, on a, on a statistical number in terms of increasing staffing.
It's funny, you anticipated my next question, which is how many certified staff we have because we call them advisors. So my understanding is there's not any standard requirements for training and for certification that for us, for using the GT advisors. And it just seems like an area that we could certainly, I know it has a financial impact, but I remember when I first learned, it was really dependent on the, the passion and the talent of the individual advisor as to how the program was running.
We, our gifted advisors do have professional learning. Our team takes, pulls them on a regular basis for professional learning, compliance, those types of things. We also have, Doug has offered Late Start, a differentiation on a dime this last year, and has been one of the highest-attended professional learnings that we've offered. So we'll continue that series to, you know, increase teacher awareness and understanding of strategies. Yeah, so those are some of the things that we're doing right now. And again, certified GT staffing is not allocated at a district level. It's something that districts take pots of money to do, to allocate, if in fact they do it. Many don't.
I remember when the GT advisors came and presented to us several months ago, asking to be recognized because they aren't represented by any bargaining units and they're kind of left off, kind of off in satellites. So I think we have a long way to go to try to help support them and to try to make they have, like you said, the training that they need to, to be more, more efficient, I guess, is one of the words we're looking for. And it was encouraging to hear that where they're certified, you have pockets of excellence. So that's a good model to follow. And I also, my ears perked up because I was thinking, how can we blend some of our MTSS money, right? Because there's probably a bigger pocket of money with MTSS that might help support some of these students. So that might be a place we could look at. And this will be a question for Mr. Sutter when he comes up, if he'll pay attention there. It looks like we've given a pretty sizable increase in our budget this year to gifted and talented. So maybe we could talk about that a little, just a heads up for a question, as I was skimming through the budget. And the numbers that you guys presented and the numbers in the budget aren't exactly the same, but I don't think they're off by a whole lot, but you might want to look at that. So was there a prior GEM that we can compare? Have we done better from the prior GEM to this year?
What was the name of it?
It was called the SEER.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we had a SEER five years ago. It was called Colorado Gifted Education Review at that point in time. And we were out of compliance about 36%. And in that time period, actually, it might have been more than that, in that time period, we had either you were in compliance or you weren't in compliance. So now we have you're in compliance, you're partially in compliance, or you're not in compliance. So we are 0% in compliance, I mean, 0%, out of compliance. Yeah, right? Yeah. So we have met all the criteria to be in compliance here in BVSD. I think we have 16% that we are partially.
So that's good improvement.
No, we've had significant improvements since the last SEER.
And I also think as we look at our budget and we go forward, it's really important to me, and this won't surprise anybody, that we talk about the limited state funding that we have for these kinds of programs. And I think we just need to continue to highlight that because to get $50 a student with the expectations that we all want to make, to, to your point, Rob, to have expectations and high expectations for these students, we need to like, think about how we talk about that at the state level, how we talk about that to our community. And I was also glancing, it looks like it wasn't a significant decrease, but our GT student graduation rate went down a little bit. So I think we've got some data that we can use to try to support additional resources to this. Rob, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I, I just think this is a really important point and evidence point around this idea of because the BS factor, budget stabilization factor, has the potential to go away, that we fully funded K-12 education. Fifty bucks a kid isn't, for this, come on. You know, but to your point, Kathy, I think that this will become the conversation. You know, for the past 13 years, it's been, you know, make us whole, right? But we're not whole, right? You know, you know, you know, the, the needs of gifted learners are real and, and we need to make sure that we're meeting those. And, and that takes money and resource. And so I think that, you know, as we begin to set legislative priorities, as we think about the fall, we really start to think about talking about our budget and talking about the overall bigger conversation around whether education is fully funded or not, right? I think that there's this task force that's going to be looking at the School Finance Act that's going to be critical to push on some of these issues as we move into the fall. But I just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, I think it was, you said, Nicole, I mean, this is 17% of our students. And there's this belief that because they're gifted and talented, they don't have any concerns. And I think identifying them as having neurodiverse issues, I think, really also helps people think about this. Because it's kind of like, well, the kids are smart, so what's their problem? So why are we giving them any resources? And so I think there's some education to our public around kind of what the needs are and how we're going to meet those. That's why I like overlapping it with MTSS, because I think that helps kind of maybe blend some resources that we could maybe get that aren't just specifically identified as GT. So I thought this was really, really a helpful presentation and we'll look forward to seeing more improvement. Nicole?
I just want to say, I think it was like around 2013 that folks had did Cora to get information on how we were doing with the SEER. And so I wanted to commend your staff, the district, for being really transparent in, in highlighting the ways in which we're doing well and the ways in which we really need to improve. It's not easy to share some of that kind of information. And so I just wanted to commend the district for, for being open about the results of the GEM and the work ahead.
Anything else from either of you or from Dr. Anderson? All right, thanks again. It was really informative and really helpful. Are we okay to go on to the next presentation and then maybe take a break? Is that all right with everyone? All right. So our next presentation is on National Honor Society. Dr. Anderson, do you want to do the introductions?
I would love to do the introductions. Board members, as you can recall, this is a topic that we, we began to really engage on around this time last year, if I, or was it?
It was the fall of 2021.
Fall of 2021. Wow, time has certainly flown. With the big idea that as we started to think about the, the differences between the criteria between schools and that it was, it was incredibly inequitable. And so we tasked our team, Dr. Fernandez was leading this work, to, to really begin to start to bring folks together in a way that makes sense. And so she's been working incredibly hard with our high schools and has lots of great information to share. So Robin, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Actually, Dr. Anderson, one thing, Robin, just one thing. It was actually the fall of 2020.
For the audience, this was, this was brought forward by board members this, and so we're very thankful for that. And sometimes things just take time, I guess, but thanks for telling us. It's good to have perspective on that.
No problem. So good evening, President Gebhardt, members of the board, and Dr. Anderson. So as Dr. Anderson said, I'm here to update you on the work about the, this is a mouthful, the variation of the National Honor Society membership criteria across our schools in BVSD. So I'm here to update you this evening on the work that has occurred over the course of this school year to create consistency in our high schools for students who may be eligible and interested in participation in National Honor Society. Of course, we align all of our work with the objectives of our strategic plan altogether for all students. National Honor Society primarily aligns with challenging, engaging, and relevant instruction. As a reminder, NHS was established in 1921 as a way to recognize both academic achievement and the values of leadership, character, and service. This slide shows the high schools in BVSD that have NHS chapters. Three of our high schools do not. Arapahoe Ridge High School and Boulder Universal do not offer extracurricular activities, of which NHS is one. New Vista has a different vehicle for honoring both scholarship and service to their community. Also on this slide, you can see the current number of NHS members in each school. As we know, our high schools have traditionally varied significantly in the criteria listed on this slide. Our work this year has been to engage the principals of our six high schools with NHS chapters, the schools' NHS faculty sponsors, and finally, the NHS student officers in the six different high schools with, with the chapters. The most significant example of the variations across the district was the minimum GPA requirement in schools that students needed in order to qualify for membership. Here you can see the different minimum GPA requirements that our high schools have had to this point. And as you can see, they have varied significantly. 3.75 unweighted for all students, 3.75 GPA weighted for all students, 3.7 unweighted for juniors versus 3.5 unweighted for seniors, or finally, 4.0 GPA for all students wanting to apply for NHS. As a reminder, the difference between a weighted and unweighted GPA is the following. Traditionally, GPA is calculated on an unweighted scale. Unweighted GPA is measured on a scale of zero to 4.0, and it does not take the difficulty of a course into account. An unweighted GPA represents an A as a 4.0, whether it is earned in an honors class or a non-advanced class. Weighted GPA does take into account course difficulty, and usually a weighted GPA is measured on a scale of zero to five. Therefore, an A in an AP class may translate into a 5.0 weighted GPA, while an A in a non-advanced class will give you a 4.0 GPA. And therefore, you can see how these variations across schools have created significantly different access to NHS for students in our schools. So that brings us to this year. The work of the principals that we have engaged in with at Centaurus, Broomfield, Monarch, Boulder, Nutterland, and Fairview began with lengthy discussions regarding the minimum grade point average that students need in order to earn, to be eligible for participation in NHS. Not only did we discuss the need for a consistent requirement, the NHS sponsors and principals all agreed that our focus as a system should not only be on consistency, but on inclusivity. To that end, the six high schools expressed a desire to create greater opportunity and access for students in this area. This is especially relevant, given the fact that fewer than 10% of our NHS members are students of color. As a result, the group came to a consensus that students would benefit from two pathways to qualify for membership of NHS in BVSD. Therefore, instead of considering students with differing minimum weighted or unweighted GPAs, as we saw a couple of slides ago, and has been the reality up until this moment, the minimum requirements moving forward will be a weighted GPA of 4.0 or an unweighted GPA of 3.75. By offering students the flexibility of participating in National Honor Society, either through a weighted or unweighted GPA, this supports students who may want to try taking advanced courses, who might not have seen themselves as taking advanced courses before, or doing so and worrying about not getting an A, and therefore possibly compromising their ability to be a member of NHS. In addition, this evens the playing field across schools as different high schools offer differing numbers of weighted and unweighted courses, thus making, getting certain weighted versus an unweighted GPA easier or harder in schools, depending on the school that a student attends. In short, students will now have two pathways in which to demonstrate academic scholarship, therefore making NHS accessible to a broader and more diverse group of students. Some of our high schools actually piloted this new grade point baseline this spring and found that a larger and broader group of students became eligible for NHS membership, and that was really exciting. The next topic that we discussed together was the grade levels at which our students can be inducted into NHS. All schools have now agreed to the alignment that students in grades 11 and 12 are eligible for participation and induction into NHS. This spring, our NHS sponsors worked with their student officers in their schools to engage them in objectively defining the pillars of leadership, character, and service, in addition to identifying a broader range of both traditional and non-traditional ways that students can demonstrate these achievements. Again, the goal of this work is to create consistency and inclusivity so that as a system, we consider a greater range of activities as examples of the pillars of NHS. There are a myriad of ways that our diverse student bodies can be recognized and honored for their actions at school, at home, and in their communities. A few examples identified by our student officers that will be included moving forward are, a demonstration of character could include showing resiliency and a growth mindset or being open to new ideas while listening and being accepting of others. Another interesting addition brought forth by students is asking NHS applicants to identify their own experiences of leadership in their lives and sharing what they have learned from it, instead of only accepting participation from the traditionally prescribed list of activities, like for example, being the captain of an athletic team. Finally, the NHS sponsors work together to create a common application that will be used across all six schools. Previously, the application forms varied dramatically. Moving forward, it will be available to students digitally, in addition, in order to make sure it will be accessible more readily to all interested students. Students who complete the application process and qualify for membership, as I have just described, will be admitted to their school's NHS chapter. While some of our schools piloted aspects of our new guidelines this spring, the school's next steps will be focused on communication with our students, their families, and our high school staff members. I'm proud of the work that I've been able to engage in this year with our NHS staff sponsors and our high school principals, and of course, the work that the sponsors did with our students. A huge shout out to all of them for all of their time and their dedication to students. So the complexities of these decisions are far, are far more than they appear at first glance. Our desire as a district to create consistency across the system for our students truly expanded into meaningful conversations around providing opportunity and access to students who possess the four pillars of NHS, but have either not traditionally seen themselves as potential participants, or who demonstrate these ways, these traits in ways not traditionally recognized as such. So this work has taken a bit longer this year than originally anticipated, but will result in a better and broader experience for students. And so at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that people may have.
That's great, thank you. Stacy?
I can't thank you enough for this. This, this is fantastic. The two main barriers that really concern me were when a school required a certain number of advanced classes, whether it be six, seven, whatever, and we know students of color are underrepresented in those, in those classes, that a student who had a 4.0 without taking any advanced classes can't get any better than a 4.0 and was not eligible for National Honor Society. That's what triggered my interest in all this. It really bothered me. I can't thank you enough. This solution is amazing, and I like the addition of how you're going to define community service, because that's another barrier. And I just, I, I just can't thank you enough. This is the best, and it was worth the wait.
Thank you. I am so excited and so proud of this work.
Richard? Just a drum roll.
Thank you for your presentation. Wonderful, really. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Kitty and then Nicole.
So I also want to thank you. I was really shocked when I learned in the fall of 2020 that there wasn't a standard way for a student to get into National Honor Society. I always assumed that NHS itself had, would set out, you know, what qualifies or not, having had no experience personally with National Honor Society. So I'm glad Stacy brought it up, and this is great. You've done wonderful work, and so I'm really happy to see it. And especially the work on expanding opportunity for students who, you know, are not the captain of whatever team and, and, you know, yes, anyway, thank you.
Thank you for that presentation and all the great work that's going into that, those changes. Couple of questions. Did this group or did your team explore or discuss consistency around communicating the NHS program and when communications might start rolling out to students? I would think earlier, men- I would think earlier mentioning might be beneficial in encouraging people to get ready for the requirements that would take place at presumably the end of sophomore year so you can participate in junior year. But is there consistency around messaging that across our schools?
Yes, we definitely talked a lot as a group about the earlier the better and the more communication the better, both specifically with students and with families. Not only around membership criteria, but also around the purpose of NHS as a service organization within each school community. So, discussing how to make sure that all of our high school faculty members are aware so that they can be talking to their students. Same goes for the counselors, but also for parents. And so yes, some of them have started to queue this work this spring with their newly inducted members, but also moving into the fall is something that they're excited to start working on as soon as they get back.
And then my second question. Looking at the different GPAs that you have listed, grading is pretty inconsistent across this district, from school to school, from teacher to teacher, and I wonder if that is something we're going to be looking at and how that plays into GPAs in which students can achieve, whether or not they want to participate in NHS. Is that part of this conversation or future conversation?
I think that's a separate conversation, right? And not part of this conversation. I think that, you know, within the context that we have with, you know, how grades are calculated, you know, differently between schools, between kids, you know, that wasn't part of what we considered. Not to say that that's not something we could take on, but not with this work.
Anyone else? Rob?
I really want to thank our sponsors, our National Honor Society sponsors, who I happened to be able to pop into a meeting, and their enthusiasm to do this and to do what's right for kids and to come together. You know, very complicated, a lot of history around the way some of these schools had done this for a long time. Embracing the change and coming together collectively on the betterment of students was really great to watch. And so I want to thank all of our sponsors at our schools, and Robyn's leadership on this was just tremendous. So thank you, Robyn.
I just have one quick question. Are there ways we can make sure that there aren't language barriers for students for entering this and for participating? Have we seen that to be an issue, or are we assuming by the time they get to be juniors that they don't have the language barriers? I'm just wondering how we're addressing that.
Well, part of the rationale for making sure that every one of our adult faculty members at our six high schools are very aware is part of that. So that we know that every child that has a trusted adult or an adult that they work with consistently, whether it's a school counselor or the CLDE teacher or, in some cases, a, you know, a daily check-in teacher, so that they are aware of, understand the timing of, and are making personal invitations to students. We did have a lot of conversation around personal invitations and the power of making sure that we are having conversations with students who may not have seen themselves or as potential participants in NHS, may not have the context from an older sibling or a parent, a family member, a friend who may have participated in NHS, so that we can make sure that we are making those contacts with students so that language is not a barrier, but also previous context is not a barrier, previous experience or exposure is not a barrier, and so all of that was part of the conversation.
Well, thanks Stacy for bringing this to our attention. I have to admit, it wasn't ever on my radar screen, and this is really exciting. So, thank you for doing that, and thank you for the great work. We'll look forward to seeing how it rolls out next year. Kitty?
Yeah, I have one more question. Do we know how many students who qualify for NHS are not interested and don't apply? Is there any way to know that?
Well, that's an interesting question, because we do know definitely how many students qualify via baseline GPA. But then how many students who decide not to apply based on either the service orientation or other aspects, I'm not sure, based on those, you know, immeasurable factors, I don't think we have looked at that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Rob, anything else? So the last item on the information is legislative update. Rob, do you have? The only thing I will bring up, and we can address it later, is I encourage all of us to spend a little bit of time on the Secretary of State website to see what initiatives have been filed, because I think we'll be looking at that over the summer, but there's some that are currently in front of the Supreme Court that could have a significant impact on our budget. And we all know a little bit about HH, but I don't think we know enough yet about HH to be able to talk about it much, except that I think we know it won't have an impact on our budget this year. But anyway, I think as opposed to legislative, it kind of fits under legislative as to what has been referred and what's been initiated, and I think we should continue to follow that. So, that's all I have. Is it all right to take a quick 10-minute break right now, board members, or less if we can? Okay.
Like to call us back to order. The next item is our consent grouping, action items and consent grouping. Seven point one personnel items, seven point two approval of minutes, May ninth, 2023 special meeting, seven point three approval of minutes, May ninth, 2023 regular meeting, seven point four approval of minutes, May sixteenth, 2023 special meeting, seven point five acceptance of donation, Foothill Elementary, seven point six acceptance of donation, Meadowlark School, seven point seven acceptance of donation, Mesa Elementary, seven point eight award of contract for bond funded artificial turf replacement at Boulder High School wrecked field, seven point nine award of the roofing services contract for bond funded improvement work at Aspen Creek PK eight school, seven point ten award of the roofing services contract for bond funded improvement work at Eldorado PK eight school, seven point eleven resolution twenty-three dash thirteen intend to participate in the coordinated election on November seventh, 2023, seven point twelve resolution twenty-three dash fourteen ratification of negotiated agreement between Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Para Educator Association, seven point thirteen grant Boulder Prep EASI targeted grant Colorado Department of Education, 2023, seven point fourteen grant Broomfield High School Behavioral Health Services, Broomfield County, 2023, and seven fifteen grant for safety, security, and emergency services, school emergency response, the safer Colorado Division of Homeland Security, 2023. Board members, are there any items that you would like to pull from the consent grouping? Seeing none, is there a motion to pass the consent grouping? Moved by Richard, seconded by Stacy. Any discussion on this?
I have one question. Rob, could you just talk really briefly about the negotiations with the paraeducators and how we were successful in bringing that to a conclusion? Just to have a little bit of daylight on that?
I can talk about that briefly and can can get Dr. Hill to follow up or come up to provide more depth. I would say that one of the really exciting things is as we worked with our with BVPA is that we moved to consensus bargaining during this session to come to some of those agreements, which board members, as you recall, is the is the bargaining that we use with BVEA very successfully. It's not interest based, it's not combative, it's more collaborative, and I think that that helped us get get this resolved in a way that was that felt good, I think, for all parties involved, and and so we're really excited about that.
Can you just give us the fifty thousand foot, were there major issues that we had to address that we resolved? Or?
I'll have to have Dr. Hill come up and and give us, you know, just a couple of highlights for that.
Good evening. So some of the biggest issues were some of the concerns with some of the paraeducate, paraeducates educators with the the piece of some of the issues they've been having in the classroom and working with some of our students, and we were able to provide some training, and we was able to add some of that funding when they were able to go out and get additional training, RPT training. We had money allocated to that last year as a pilot. We felt that it was effective this year, so we were able to continue that this year, you know, as they're continuing to get trained. One of the issues that they talked about and concerns they talked about was just being able to have PD that was offered to them that they were able to feel, you know, valued as professionals. So, you know, we were able to have those conversations and talk about some of those professional development classes that we provide for them, just like we do with our other units, and we're going to be continuing that this year. So we were pleased about that. Also, in the beginning of the year, we had issues with filling some of those vacancies. So to make those positions more attractive, we were able to add stipends, whether they were retention stipends or or deeming them hard to fill, so helping attract, you know, some of those employees outside, which was was helpful. So this year, what we were able to do is offer another retention bonus. So at the end of September, for all those returning in those same positions, we'll be able to offer a little stipend on to those employees as well. But one of the biggest pieces is, you know, a lot of times we wait till the spring to start talking about these interests. So we're dedicated to, you know, really start our negotiations unofficially early, where they're able to list their interests. We'll list our interests, and we can sit together and really start those conversations early and often. So when we lead up to the spring, we're able to just continue, where we're not just starting from scratch, if you will. And Dr. Anderson mentioned that this year it felt better because we were able to move to the consensus type model where we were able to sit at the table, form smaller groups, you know, and have those different groups and those stakeholders really work together and come up with solutions, you know, instead of having it feel, you know, that contentious piece of it. We all agree that, you know, we're all on one team, you know, it's not our paras against the district, as some people like to say. We approached it as we're all the same team. We are all the district, but we just have different subgroups. So approaching it that way and 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 really bringing in other stakeholders, you know, they had many times they brought experts from the school to really tell their story. We had an opportunity to for them to tell why they're feeling a certain way, you know, we were able to then hear them and really start digging into, well, we may not be able to do something this year, but really coming up with other solutions. If we can't give you all of what you're seeking, what are some other creative ways that we can either meet halfway or also continue to come up with different solutions that's going to feel good for everybody? So that that really felt good. And, you know, just continuing that work, you know, one of the things we say is, you know, negotiations isn't just starting in the spring, it's ongoing conversations. So resetting, building those relationships, and moving forward. So those are the, you know, some of the the big items, and, you know, again, you know, we we completed and we were able to come to some agreements. But again, we know that early in the fall, unofficially, we're going to continue those conversations that we that we started this spring.
That's really exciting. Thank you. And our paras are so important to our overall success in the classroom and to the student experience, and so I think reaching an agreement with them and honoring them is so important. So thank you for that great work and for giving us a synopsis, because, you know, appropriately, we don't really have any eyesight into the negotiations, and so it just sounds like it went really well, and so we're really excited to hear that. Kitty, did you want to say something?
Well, I just wanted to sort of echo that. I was so pleased when I learned that we were using the collaborative consensus process, because I remember well, last year, how contentious it got. And so I hope that the union continues to want to negotiate using that model.
Well, yes, and it and it felt good, and, you know, as we debriefed afterwards, that's one of the things that we all agreed just how collaborative it felt, and, you know, credit to their leadership as well. You know, you know, they, you know, stepped out and, you know, they they took a risk to try this this model, and it it just really felt good. So, you know, I want to give thanks to their their leadership, and, you know, it's a lot of work that goes into it in a short period of time, but we were able to get across the finish line, and a lot of that has to do with this, the collaboration that we had and building trust and knowing that we're on the same team. So it felt good.
It's just such a good way to launch into the next year, so thank you for that, to launch on a positive feeling of how things went, Rob.
Yep, just want to thank Dr. Hill, you know, thank Lisa Larson, the, you know, president of BVPA, you know, and I think that I'm I was glad to hear that that they talked about, you know, some of the the big concerns. You know, we've seen some big behaviors in schools and para professionals have 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 really had to step up and manage some of those behaviors, and so to continue the stipend to provide our our paras who take the appropriate training as part of a pilot, I think, is a great first step. And then just to consider to have those ongoing conversations and not, you know, letting concerns build up over years and then putting them on a list and trying to come sort those out, you know, just continuous conversation consensus has served us really well, and so very excited we were able to get there.
I misspoke. I said it was not BVPA that we had such rancor with last year, it was the classified unions. So I just want to be on the record to correct myself.
And just to sneak preview into DVCEA, since you brought it up, we were able to use a form of consensus with that bargaining unit as well, and again, felt great, and I know they they voted last night, so again, you know, it's amazing what collaboration and sending down and working what people can do. So excited about that process as well.
Thanks, Dr. Hill. We didn't give you a heads up that we were going to draw you up to the podium, so thanks for coming up and sharing with us. I really appreciate it.
Hey, I'm always ready. Thank you.
All right, anything else, board members? I just also want to say a thank you to Rob Price. It's so exciting to see the bond work starting. It's going to be an exciting summer, a busy summer for you, I'm sure, but just to see the early bond projects is really exciting. So thanks for bringing those forward and look forward to seeing the end results of all that. So Laura, can you call the role?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Niznik.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we have a study item, and I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Anderson, to do the introductions again.
Thank you, Board President Gephardt, members of the board. Bill Sutter is here to present to you for study the twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget. I think that he's got an abbreviated presentation from the last one that you've seen. We'll go through some slides and then has been able to really look at the numbers, go from estimations to closer to actuals. We had some increased revenues that he'll kind of talk to you all about as we think about bringing the budget forward, a balanced budget, and so excited to turn the presentation over to Bill.
Thank you, President Gephardt, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. Let me bring up the slide deck. Much of this slide deck is the same or very similar to what we looked at last meeting that we've looked at the preliminary budget with some slightly better outcomes. So we'll start with the general operating fund and touch on the other funds, the other accounting funds within the district. Real quick, brief overview again of the timeline and milestones, the input, enrollment, and then the budget side. So again, on the milestones, just moving through our process, we're getting very close to the end, and just a couple of steps left with the planned budget adoption being on June thirteenth. We still do have a couple of, or a data input, the June current year state revenue forecast that will come around the twentieth of June, which also provides some information as we move forward into actually getting into the next fiscal year. The input, again, same list, I think I updated.
Bill, I hate to interrupt you, but are you supposed to be moving the slides or?
Oh, I am moving the slides. Why aren't they showing?
There you go, well.
My goodness.
I figured I'd stop you before I make you do it again.
No. See, it doesn't work on that one. Let's see, how do we, how do we move the slides if I don't have them showing? Tech support. As I was saying, there we go, much better. Moving through our milestones, we have a, just the budget adoption in June, and then the state revenue forecast coming up in later June that will provide some input or information as we get into the next fiscal year. On the input side of things, same list as we had last time, except I updated the last bullet item that we've had a couple of more board meetings and topics related to budget development. Again, the major focus of the budget development, employee compensation, strategic initiative investments around special education, bilingual education, and grad plus program, addressing the achievement gaps, opportunity gaps, disproportionality, and of course, inflation. Enrollment, again, no changes from what we were looking at before, the drop in enrollment in K-12, and then a projected increase in preschool enrollment with the rollout of the UPK program. Some proposed budget highlights with the resource commitments and adjustments we made, and then other funds, the notable changes there. Twenty-four point nine million in ongoing new revenue, thirty point four million committed to staff compensation, eleven point six million for additional school staffing programs, instructional materials, and student support, notably our targeted literacy support with the VIP program, continuing that another year as we had that update on the academic return on investment, update to that, bilingual education, ILC classrooms, CTE support, classroom teachers, and grad plus initiatives. This does include both ongoing and one-time uses rolled together, just as a note there. Reduction in staffing costs, so we have declining enrollment, so we've reduced staff associated with fewer students, and then we have some cost shifts between programs and the shifting of costs to the new Colorado Universal Preschool Program. One point eight million for security investment, software implementation, and building maintenance, and one point one million committed to address inflation pressures in maintenance, materials, software, and utilities, the largest portion of that being utilities. So here we have the summary of the general operating fund, and I'll take a few minutes on this just to explain where we are and what happened. If we remember back to the preliminary budget, we were projecting a unbalanced budget at that point in time, we're short about six million dollars. That included some projections around the revenue side that included legislative changes, both buying down of the negative factor and some proposed or discussed changes in the School Finance Act that would have negatively impacted Boulder, as well as many other districts in the state. So as those changes were finalized, the legislature did increase the buy down to the negative factor or improve that to a hundred and eighty million statewide, and then they did not implement those detrimental changes in the School Finance Act. So those were ongoing revenue changes. There were some, or was one in particular, one-time revenue change. The legislature is continuing to fund at-risk students at the current year's numbers because largely because they don't have the data to make a change to how they're going to count and fund at-risk students. So it was easier for them just to continue forward for this one year. There is an expectation that that number will drop because it's sort of a high point of the last three years of at-risk student counts, and so we're counting that as one-time revenue. Then, one thing to note, so we do have to project an uncollectible rate on local property taxes, right? So as we usually project about three quarters of one percent as being uncollectible in any particular year. So it's a little unfortunate that the School Finance Act funds us with local property taxes, and then we always have some numbers that aren't collected for whatever reason that might be. But we look at that every year, and we're able to reduce that uncollectible rate by a little bit, and that improves some of the revenue coming in. So again, legislative changes, some ongoing, some one-time, and so that improved on the revenue side, and then on the expenditure side, the largest change there being our transfer of expenses to the, or the appropriate expenses to the Operations and Technology Fund, that's about two point three million. The last time we did that was in the 2020, twenty-one year, and we made a transfer of six million dollars at that point, and so this is not unusual, but we wanted to see how everything shook out on the revenue side before we moved those, made that transfer there. Reserves, so that reduction in reserves is just because of moving from one year to the next, as we take out some expenses, we don't need to re-reserve dollars on one-time expenses, and so as those come out, we're able to drop the, what we were projecting for the increase in reserves. So it's more staying a little bit more flat than an actual increase in reserves. We're still staying within our three percent taper, four percent contingency, and the other reserves that we have in place. So though that ending balance of four point one million, that is entirely one-time dollars, so they're not ongoing dollars sitting in there. not ongoing dollars sitting in there. And those are available to be spent or to hold on until next year as we get into the fall, see how our enrollment shakes out, see how the universal preschool program shakes out, see how the free meals for all shakes out. So there's a handful of unknowns as we get into the new fiscal year. Repeating the notable items for food service, community schools, and preschool fund with the implementation of Proposition FF, free meals for all, and the expansion of the UPK program. And then moving into cap reserve, these were noted on the preliminary budget, the 1 million, one-time transfer to replenish the emergency projects line item. And then in the operations and technology fund, we've added this additional line for the $2.3 million ongoing transfer of appropriate expenditures from the general operating fund. Next steps, so we have the scheduled budget adoption on June 13th. If that doesn't happen, we do have up until the June 30th for the statutory deadline for budget adoption. And then, of course, all the way up until January 31st for the revised budget adoption to look at how we end up in this fiscal year, as well as any changes related to enrollment and other programs. The end.
Bill's happy to answer any questions that you all may have. Bill, pull the deck back up if you wouldn't mind, and if you could go back to the slide that had some pretty significant changes from the preliminary and just kind of maybe do another walkthrough of that. I think that that's where board member questions will come from. You know the slide I'm talking about? Not that one. So just as a review, board members, and then questions, and Bill, stop me if I'm not explaining this correctly. You know, when we presented the preliminary budget, that was based on 120 million, the original preliminary was based on, at the time, governors projected $120 million buy-down. We went to 150, that ended up to 180, which caused new revenue, right? Because we reduced the number of teachers that we had based on declining enrollment, that's really what led to the reduction in reserves. I mean, that's the big expense right there, as you think about the reduction of reserves because we wouldn't be spending as much on salaries?
That, and removing one-time expenses that were in the current year, when you take those out, you don't need the reserves on them any longer.
Right. And then the ops and techs transfer, I think that you explained that that well. And so those $2.4 million, that was hitting that bottom line of the negative 6 million came out, and we moved over that to ongoing and ops and tech fund transfer, which is a result of increasing property taxes, which increase the amount of dollars based on the mills that we collect.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So just a little bit more clarification, but happy to answer any other questions, board members.
Are you going to walk us through the three-page or two, because I think there's some questions that might, do you have that as a slide, or?
I do not, but I can bring that up as well. I think.
While you're doing that quick question, so this current budget that's being presented is balanced, what's the, is it that we have an 11 million exit, well, those bottom lines, can you just clarify for me?
Do you want me to bring that back up?
Yeah, yeah, pull that back up, yes, please.
We're testing your text.
Sorry.
No, no, that's a good question.
Because those look like buckets to me, not necessarily the, but the $11 million is that the ending balance, it's a change, but what's the, so we have a $4 million surplus, or what is that? Walk me through those numbers as far as how our budget is looking overall.
Right, so the proposed budget, that first column, which when I go to the three-pager, that might make a little more sense. So that's just what the proposed, general fund proposed budget is, revenue, expense transfers, et cetera, with an ending balance of 4.1 million. The next column is the change from the preliminary budget. So how did we get from a negative 6 million to having 4 million available? And it was more revenue, less expensive, less reserves gets us there.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And to your point, Nicole, the 4.1 million is projected fund balance, one-time fund balance. And then to Bill's point, with the unknowns with Colorado preschool program, with the unknowns on student enrollment, right, I do think it's wise to pass a budget with a fund balance so we don't have to go in and start cutting programs at the beginning of the year. And if students come in and preschool comes in, we would have the opportunity to take those one-time dollars at mid-year and allocate those to things. We could tuck those away into whether it's our way to differentiated fund that we have opportunities to put dollars in, or just hang on to it to kind of see what happens as declining enrollment hits us next year.
So here's the three-pager. Okay. Now, you memorized that other slide, so we'll test your knowledge here a little bit.
You can't put them both up side by side?
Definitely not. So, beginning balance, 53.5 million, that's the top number in the top right-hand corner that probably nobody can read on the screen. Zoom in a little bit. So proposed budget, right there, 53.5 million, so that was the first number on that table. Then revenue, 405.1 million, .0 million, a little rounding there, with total resources, Then we have our expenditures of 354.5 million. I can zoom in a little bit more on that. So that's the expenditures right there. Our reserves, 41 million. Transfers, so this 58.6 million is the transfers largely to charter schools, but also risk management and athletics and, or else is in the, the funds that we collect the revenue in the general fund, and then it gets transferred over to the other fund, cap reserves, another one. And then there's the 4.1 million ending balance right there. So that's where those numbers tie out on there. And then, a little bit more zoomed out there. And then this is the expenditure side, so, I mean, the revenue side. So here's where all the revenues are coming in, in the various sources, in local sources and state sources. I think this might be something that President Gephardt was maybe indicating we should point out. So the current, that first line, property taxes, current, so that is the line item for the property taxes associated with, whoops, the School Finance Act. So that large jump from 208.3 million up to 232 million, that was the initial projection of property tax increases. This does not include the recent reevaluations that folks just got. We won't have those finalized numbers until we get much further into the fall and even up until they're certified by the counties and provided to the board in December. Interestingly enough, even though there was a significant change in the School Finance Act, both from the revenue side, the cost of living increase for, or inflationary increase of 8%, the state share, the dollars we get out of the School Finance Act, whoops, has actually gone down from 50, almost 51 million, down to 48 million. So again, as more local dollars come in in the School Finance Act, that means the state can provide fewer dollars in the state share. Let's see, on the expenditure side, so we have our expenditures by job types and then by the various sort of what kind of stuff it is, if it's not personnel, purchase services, supplies, that we do have that line item in there, cost allocated to the operations and technology fund, so that's where that $2.3 million increase is happening there.
Bill?
Yep.
The purchased professional and tech services, that has really fallen off since, over the past three years. Can you speak a little bit about what is coming out of that fund that maybe you spent in the last three years?
Not off the top of my head, but we can dig into that. That's, a lot of one-time things go in there typically.
ERP?
Yes, yes.
ERP implementation is probably a big chunk of that, if I had to guess.
Yep. But we can get a more definitive answer on that as well.
Thank you.
Then we have our reserves, so contingency reserve, 4% Tabor, 3% district reserve, and then multi-year projects. So one thing that we've done, so last year in the adopted budget, we had some of the grad plus investments were three years, and we put all of the budget in the one year, the current year that we're just wrapping up, which creates unspent dollars in the middle of the year and can just get a little confusing as to, you know, why aren't you spending all the dollars that you had budgeted? Well, we budgeted the three years' worth of expense all at once. So what we've done is we moved that down into a multi-year reserve line that as we get into the next year of the, whatever the project is that's been authorized for multiple years, we'll take it out of the reserve and put it into the expenses. And then here's all the transfers that I was mentioning. Again, the largest portion of that being for our charter schools. So, if you have any other questions on that, or do I?
I haven't even started with questions. I just wanted you to walk us through it.
Right.
So board members' questions? Nicole, do you have any more? So the charters is just pretty much a pass-through, right?
Correct.
And we have to back, we have to pay a percentage of our mill levies to them as well, and it's a flat amount, or it's a 95% or something?
Correct. We have posted on the website as required the plan for allocation of mill levy overrides to charter schools, so that is posted on the website and also built into their contracts as we move forward.
And at the time we allocated those dollars, we weren't differentiating our funding, and now we are, so there is a potential for looking at that going forward? At least the mill levy dollar allocation? You don't have to answer that right now. I remember we had lots of conversations about how, there was a formula we could adopt for the sharing of the mill levy, and we were looking at wanting to differentiate that, but because we weren't differentiating our funding at the district level, we couldn't really differentiate the funding for the charters, but now we do. So my question is, as those roll up, can we have that conversation about how we share our mill levy dollars that more reflects the way we differentiate our funding?
The question would be, and we'd have to, we'd have to look into this, you know, with the way to differentiated funding, that is on top of how we allocate our funds to our schools, right, through our formulas that are in the budget book. So would that then meet the threshold of what you're speaking to? Because what you're speaking to is happened in the spring of 2018, right, as those laws changed. And so that would be, that would be the question that we'd have to dig into and figure out to be able to see if, if then, if that were the case, then would that be open to be able to change that?
And most likely just open as those contracts open up, but I just think it's an important conversation to have because we've seen the impact of our differentiated funding, and I think we support that. And in declining budgets, we need to make sure that our limited resources are going to the places that they're needed the most. So I just think it's a conversation to have. Do we know yet what impact the free lunch is going to have? Are we able to, we don't know yet because we won't know next year what those costs are, but how did you anticipate that? Is it net zero, net neutral to us? Is it, are we going to have to pay more?
At this point in time, assuming the participation rates come in as planned, it has improved or reduced the transfer from the general fund into the food service fund, so it's not needing to be as supported as much. We'll see how that participation holds up and also whether statewide the participation exceeds their revenue available. That's another little challenge with it.
So for now, it was a revenue plus for us, but if the state says, oops, we had more kids than we thought eating lunch, then they could come back and maybe in a, a negative supplemental, take it back from us.
Correct. And we did build that reduction that we put into the general fund. We categorized it as a one-time reduction, just in case, so that kind of hedging the bet that if it doesn't pan out quite as planned, then it's not something that's going to be an ongoing problem for us.
Do we yet know what financial impact UPK is going to have on us and the funding from the state?
That, I would say, is in the exact same boat as far as the participation and ability to get folks through the state system and into the district, which has been a little challenging. Their timing is not stellar as far as we're just, was it last week, did round two. Round three is coming up somewhere down the road, and we're supposed to be hiring and planning for classrooms, and they haven't been able to provide us with the number of folks that are coming. And then also just the changes in what folks might think they were going to get and what they're actually getting might not quite line up, and so.
I think that there's, there'll be challenges on the expenditures and the revenues side of UPK, right? And to the extent that we would, we would have anticipated, with the seats we opened, had those seats come open in a quicker kind of timetable, then folks may, I think the worry is that some folks aren't going to wait around to wait to see what they got until like a couple of weeks before the school year starts. But to that extent, then, it could potentially mean we have to hire less teachers to be able to, so, you know, there may be some netting out of that over time. And so I think that that's, that's something that we'll have to keep an eye on. It's just so fuzzy. I think that Bill and the team have done a good job to try to project that on our best-case scenario. I don't think there's a worst-case scenario, some maybe, somewhere maybe in between, but I say that maybe, yes, we might not get the revenues, but you'd also drop some of the expenditures on that as well. So, I mean, hopefully some of that levels out and evens out. And to the extent that we get to a position where we have to put some of that on one-time dollars and course correct as we, as the system gets up and going, we can potentially do that. I would say with UPK, one of the things that we're seeing is our sites where we're able to stand up, stand up all-day care through our community schools program, those are seeing really robust enrollments, and where we haven't been able to stand that up, you're seeing lower enrollments, which would make sense. So to the extent that we can shift those models or figure those things out. So to the extent that we can shift those models or figure those things out, our team will be working all summer on that.
And, and that is really related to, to space available, that some of our, while we did build out preschool classrooms in all of our elementary schools, we didn't necessarily build out as many as are potentially needed for a program as large as this. But we're in much better shape than a lot of districts are, just from that capital investment side, for sure.
And then we still have to figure out the whole sped issue with UPK, which I think we haven't quite figured out yet, and maintenance of effort. Maybe we'll know that in August. At least we might know where students are going.
Yeah, I do think that, that in, in speaking with our team, you know, you're just going to have to hold some dollars aside for students who start somewhere and then get placed with us, which I think was some of the worry. And so we have, you know, I think that we've tried to do as much anticipating around whether it's Prop FF, you know, whether it's UPK, whether it's Prop HH and the potential impacts, whether it's the buy-down that went from one twenty to one eighty to one fifty, back to one eighty to, you know, which makes it, I think, challenging board members as we think about trying to thread all these needles and provide when we get to the preliminary budget phase, like a real dollar-for-dollar accurate estimation when all of the variables continue to move underneath our feet. And Bill has to take these points in time that I think they're defensible around this is what we think is going to happen because this person said this, and at this point in time, that was correct, not what he had heard or what we're thinking or what might happen. And so, you know, when I think about the big shift of, you know, upside-down six million to now at a place where, you know, we have a potential fund balance of four million, you know, that, you know, in a big scheme of things, one, two percent, I mean, those feel like big dollars. We have a big budget. And, and this thing, this year with all of those factors, I think, has been increasingly more challenging than maybe in years past. And so, you know, commend the budget team for looking, reworking, rethinking as we've gone through these things. And still to be able to, to present what I think is an incredibly impressive compensation package to all employees with eight percent cost of living, steps, lanes. You know, feel really good about where we are.
And Rob, you anticipated one of my questions. We're kind of seeing the end of ERP implementation costs. So that's a, that's a plus.
Well, a reduction. Costs, I wouldn't say end. I think that there's ongoing maintenance and ongoing customizations as systems change, as things change, as state requirements change, as recording needs change. But, but I think that, that, you know, we, we really had to lean in this year to make sure that, that we got it implemented. And to the extent that we've been able to get the things that we've rolled out, the modules, we've rolled out the pieces that we've rolled out working. But there are other pieces to the ERP that we'll roll out over the course of the next fiscal year. And, and we'll just have to make sure that, that we're doing, that we've, you know, lessons learned and be prepared to maybe scale some of that up, which those costs would come to at mid-year if we were to have to bring in any other individual folks to kind of help either code or problem solve as we get into full, smooth implementation. I think that we're in a good place right now with what we've done. But every time we try to do something new, I think that we can anticipate some bumps.
So Bill, can you pull up your three pager? I just have a question about the top line. We had a big reduction in our unreserved, about twenty million dollars. I'm just wondering if you can explain that. I can just give you the two numbers. We don't need to wait while you.
Which number?
The very first number, which is our fund balance unspent reserves. Last year was seventy-one million. This year it's fifty-three million.
Right. So as we, so this is the beginning of the year. We did do the, scroll down into the transfers. So this fifteen million dollars here, that's one of the, that is the initial differentiated school support transfer that we did in one year. Then we set up the reserve in another year. And so we started the year with, scroll back up, all the way up to the top. So we've, we've set aside some of those one-time dollars. We've put them into reserves. We've used them for one-time activities. So we're bringing it back down to something that's more in line with, in a perfect world, that number would be your reserves. Because you would spend everything and transfer everything perfectly. You'd leave your reserves. You'd carry them to the top and move forward. So we're getting back closer to that reserve number.
And, and the thing that, that's made it different is we've set aside one-time dollars to spend over multiple years.
Correct.
Right? Which, which is a different way to think about, and especially as we thought about our ESR dollars and other one-time dollars that came in. And so I think that that probably is, is a big factor in that, Bill. Is that right?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely one of the pieces, as well as like carryovers, right? So we don't project any carryovers. We project it to be all spent. So we know that this number is going to be higher with carryover dollars once we get to the revised budget side of things.
So things that are budgeted for this year that we don't end up spending, right? Then those dollars then end up going into the reserve as, that either then we reallocate to, to departments, divisions, schools to be able to spend and use those dollars on what it was budgeted for. There's no obligation to do that, right? But that's been typical practice.
Yep. The, the line item right there, the carryover funds, going from five to seven million, then down to zero. In the proposed budget, we always don't, we'd never project to have carryover because it could be spent by year-end.
Just a couple of quick questions, and then I have a process question because I see my board members with briefcases in their lap and sunglasses ready to go. So I think I've stretched their patience a little bit. So if I have specific questions, I maybe just, like, I'd like to know what the reserve is for teachers, like we've had, to help smooth out enrollment differences. And in the past, we've put a lot of money into that because we can't really predict what the enrollment's going to look like. So I have a few specific questions like that. But my few remaining general ones, hang with me, Richard. HH will be backfilled at least for one year. So we don't have to anticipate any budget deficits if HH were to pass. Is that right? At least for one year, as I understand it?
So, nothing has been built, including the state budget, on the changes associated with HH. So the increased local revenue projections based on the updated assessed valuations, those are not taken into account at the state level because they happened right at the very end, and they haven't updated it. For example, the Ledge Council projection for the metro front range was like sixteen point seven percent. And it's something north of two times that, right? So that hasn't been built into the projections. So that collection, if HH were to pass, there's no detriment to the, to the state or local collections at this point.
That was just my question, is we don't have to anticipate any budget impact for one year at least for HH?
Correct.
Because the state set aside enough money if it were to pass. And then I just want to draw attention at some point to the thing that's called state sources. You don't have to put it up there, Bill, but when we were talking about how little we get back from the state, I think it's really important to look at those numbers and recognize that that is a small percentage of what we have to spend out of our general fund for all of those areas. ALPA, even with the big increase on special education, that does not cover anywhere close to what our expenses are. Is that, I just get tired of the spin that we've now fully funding special education because we randomly picked one number, and now we've grown it by inflation, and everything's good, right?
Randomly meeting or meeting a number that was randomly picked fifteen years ago, or whatever it was. So yes, no, it's, that increase in the reimbursement for existing expenditures is certainly helpful and
Right. But it's nowhere close to, anywhere close to what we have to spend out of our general fund to meet those obligations.
Correct.
And if the state, the state share, it would be really good if instead of decreasing it as those property taxes came in, if they actually reinvested that into education. Just a thought. The whole idea of increasing the mill levy was that we would be able to keep those dollars in education until the BS factor was paid down. And we have not seen that happen, have we?
They're attempting. They're getting closer.
So
It's the thought that counts.
So Rob, if, if, as people pay attention to these numbers a little bit, we have like three weeks between now and the final budget. I assume it'd be all right just to send those questions as we kind of digest all of this because there's a lot of information.
What I'd offer is that any board members who want Bill and I to sit down with them to kind of go through some of these more in detail in a little bit more time and space, more space to ask individualized questions, we'd be happy to do that prior to January, or, not January, June thirteenth. And I realize there were some, some pretty big shifts, and I can read the body language of, of the board, and there's some, you know, just wanting to, a little bit more detail on that, we're happy to do that.
All right, so, to be continued. Anything else from board members? I would encourage you all to take Rob up on that offer between now and June thirteenth because there's a lot of information in here. And I think we just need to, and, and I just want to applaud you. The, the really big budget document is dense and full of really good information. So thank you, with history and with explanations in. So I hope that people pay attention to that as well. So. All right, so we are on to future agenda requests, board members? I have a couple, really quick. I'm wondering, I see Frank out there, if we could have some kind of conversation around ChatGPT and whether we need to be thinking about policies around that and how we're going to be handling that going into the school year? Because I think it's, it's taking off more quickly than we're responding. So I would love to see us, and you've brought that up some, Rob, that I would like to see whether, I don't think we can get it done by June thirteenth, but if we could do something by the very beginning of the board, again, in August, if we could be thinking about policies and how we're going to advise our teachers and what we're going to be doing on that, I think that's really important. I'd also like to see us have a conversation around our attendance policies because we're out of sync with what was, is required by statute. And we've been getting a few emails about our one-period attendance policy and what that does to students. And I think in these days of mental health challenges, if we are so inflexible that we can't give students a little bit of time to breathe and to recover without punishing them, I think that's a challenge. And then, as you've heard me say over and over, and maybe we just can't do it yet, I'm continually upset, not upset, worried about UPK and what's happening. And I think parents rightfully are upset, but it's nothing we've created. And so I think to the extent we can be transparent about that and try to make sure that people understand what's going on with that, I think that's really important. Bless you. So if we could, those are my just requests for agenda items. Anybody else? Nicole?
Not necessarily agenda items, one of them isn't. There's been conversations, questions around security implement, the ability to implement security measures in our schools. There is a really large price tag associated with those. So as we head into election season, I think this is going to become a school board election season. It's going to become an increasing topic of conversation. So if we could have broad numbers of what would it cost potentially, not an in-depth, to implement some of these items that are being asked for, the films, the fences, the, just to give folks a sense of that as we're looking at our overall budget. I think that could be helpful in framing some of these conversations and getting ahead of those messages as they, I would assume they'll come out in the school board elections, that might be helpful. And then, you know, it's my understanding that we're supposed to be getting more granular information on demographics and housing with the 2020 census data. And as that becomes available, I think that would be important for us to have as a board when we talk about declining enrollment and the potential, as President Gephardt mentioned, zoning and redrawing lines and things of that nature. I think that's an important piece. And so as that comes, becomes available, something that I would like us to be including in that grander conversation around enrollment and declining enrollment.
I would say the first would come as an RFI, right, that we, we would then be able to dig into. And then the second, we'll just have to check with staff around when then information's going to be coming out. But I do think that would be helpful information.
I have one that I'd like to see if we can follow up on the board conversations that you had at the last board meeting regarding board compensation. Is it? Okay, great. So are we going to be talking about that before the board elections in August? Excellent.
Beth, what can we do about the Indigenous Peoples' edit to our calendar? Can we fix that?
I'd have to check to, to, to see what, what he was speaking to. I just, I took the notes, and so we'll have to follow up on that.
Anybody else? All right, so I think we have a motion to adjourn by Nicole, seconded by Kitty, and we don't come back into session until June thirteenth. So Happy Memorial Day, everyone. And thank you, Kristin, and, oh, Sam's not here, for sitting in for Kathleen. Thank you for doing that. It's great to see you over there. Appreciate your help.